Hired her to help out Jeff Woody on her building inspections and stuff. And there's certain things that you have to accomplish and some of your criteria is in different things. And she's already gotten the big, big, big test and just found out last week that she's passed that. So Michelle got her a cake and we had a little party around here, but she was really excited and really happy. But it makes us look good too, because we've got Jocelyn and Michelle that just continually knock these things out. So kudos to both of them. Great big hires for us and we're really pleased with their progress and work so far. Staffing authorization.
The list in the next couple of months and then one of the newest developments is the ABS kids over by the Dollar Tree. That, that suite has been vacant for some time, I understand. And so it's nice to, to see that get finished out. And they will provide a great service to the community. So.
Yeah. Couple of quick questions. I haven't seen any signage go up for Chuck E. Cheese or Tesla. Is that, you know, as you say, it's drawn to a close. What usually is in the, in the realm?
So you'll probably see the site sign for Tesla first. So they'll have a little monument sign on the site. And then the pylon sign that's meant to be the freeway exposure. That's a larger sign. It's in review in my department. So we've seen.
Hearing. Okay. So the public hearing to receive and consider public comments regarding the following. A amending the Riverdale city budget for fiscal year 2024. B proposed amendments to the Riverdale city code. Seeing no public comments, we would need a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. I need a discussion on that motion. All in favor say yes.
Yes.
Okay. That passes unanimously. The public hearing is now closed. Item number three, discussion and possible action concerning ambulance services. Mr. Brooks.
Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to give just a little bit of a lead into this. As we followed, you know, the Riverdale citizens page and the various online things that discuss these items. These things get twisted and distorted and it's back to that. And I'll tell you the reason why we did when we started looking at these things, I mean, and Chief Shalley can address these issues later if we need to. But we, we can't hire really anybody anymore like we used to. And, and fire is, is in a world of hurt right now. We, we've had some positions open for some time now. And none of them have been filled for full-time captains. It was really clear to what came back to us is that it's the ambulance that if they were going to choose between those two, it would be the ambulance that they would prefer to see leave and keep the heavy rescue. And there's a number of reasons why. One is the training and, and things that they receive. When, when we first established the heavy rescue, we were the one and only in the county. And that, that drew on our resources drastically. That's changed since that first started out. And now there's two other heavy rescues in the county. And so it doesn't tax us as much as far as having our guys gone. But it does help recruit because the fire guys like that. And it gives them additional training that you just don't get anywhere. There's not a lot of it around. And so it doesn't cost us anything, but it doesn't bring in any money. And that was the concern about when I started looking at this versus, well, let's get rid of that one because the ambulance brings me money in. But when the guy said, no, we like our fire department and we've got to keep this portion of that, that we can't lose. But beyond that, what do we do or what don't we do? To keep an ambulance, it costs us money. We also bring money in with that. So we've got to weigh these options.
Okay. I think we got it coming. I'll slow down here for just a second. So it's coming here. So what we did is we talked to Chief Shalley. And we had him prepare. He prepared his budget. And then we also had him prepare his budget. So we prepared his budget. You can see here's the tentative fiscal year actions is how that was originally set up. Thousand is ambulance transportation fees. That's what we have budgeted. These are the expenditures that we have on that May 7th meeting. We talked about payments. If you're pool purchases, the ambulance and basically leases it back. So we pulled out all those kinds of things so that we could adjust what the budget would look like without the ambulance. So then there was a couple of options that Chief Shalley put together. And we've got them listed here kind of in summary form. So with this option one, we would maintain the four full timers thousand of revenues. And then we also have like the reduction of expenses. So with those changes, we would end up, this is what our current impact is if we take those revenues associated with the fire department. Here's our total expenses. So the net impact to the general funds about $1.9 million. If we did that same thing with this option, our expenditures decrease, but we also have a reduction in revenues. So we would be short about $284,000. If we got rid of the ambulance, but we kept the, the four full timers and ended away with part timers. So that's kind of that option one. The option two would be having three full timers. And then the fourth position as a part-time staff, minimum staffing would still be three. So we'd rely on those part-time shifts to help backfill. And then if we weren't able to.
Staffing of three, we're going to have to go to overtime more frequently like we're doing right now compared to the full-time of four. Then we can drop to three and not go to overtime for both sick and annually use. So, so we would have a, I think those are flipped.
The 148 and one and 114 are flipped.
I feel very comfortable with that.
So I'll have to check my numbers.
Isn't there, isn't there a 250 for shift coverage? Doesn't that, shouldn't that cover?
So yeah, and that's part timers down here. So that, so. What we did is we took like an average of what the wages were and we calculated it and it's every day. So it's that amount times 24 times 365 gives us the 250. But then we still need some overtime to cover that. So I believe the 114 is the, um, 114. And then we minus like the 74,000. So that gives us about 40,000 in overtime to cover those. So and the other thing we looked at is we looked at, um, cause I asked Chief Shalley, I'm like, how many absences do we have? And so you can see right here, he put this together of six shift vacation shifts. So we're averaging, um, and that's how we put together some of these numbers is based upon actual six shifts. So we're averaging, you can see there somewhere between five and eight days a month that we needed to cover for sick. So yes, there is, um, you know, like how much could we cover with, with the one versus the other? So that's why we've got, I believe the 114 is right on this one because we wouldn't need. We have some part timers and we wouldn't need as much of the overtime, but I can double check this number right here. And so that's where we came up with this option. This third option in general terms is kind of what we're doing currently because we just have three full timers. Um, and it's not using, um, part timers or using, not having a part timer on all the time. So we just use part timers to backfill and then we'd have overtime to backfill is what that option is. Then these other two are maintaining the ambulance. So that would be, this is actually, you can see the full-time wages go up. That would be having a fifth person on. So we'd be completely full-time. Our minimum staffing would be four. So we have no, um, we have no part-time there. And then this last option is kind of what we're doing now, but we'd still maintain the ambulance. We'd have four plus a fifth part timer, but 24 hours a day. And then backfilling with both part-time and overtime. So this is kind of roughly what those options would cost. Some of this, you know, is somewhat subjective because we don't know who we could hire. So we don't know exactly what those wages would cost. Like I said, we, we don't know exactly what the overtime would be. Some of these, we, we put this together. Some of the numbers that I originally put together, we actually had, um, more overtime just based upon covering those. Cause originally on the sheet that we got from Chief Shalley, we're looking at covering like a hundred days of worth of shifts with overtime. Now he, in talking to him, he's like, well, we really only need to cover the sick and we really need to only cover the ones when we have dropped below that minimum staffing. So some of that, you know, like it's hard to predict incredibly accurate what, where we would be at. But when we sat down and talked about the numbers, I believe these were the overtime numbers that we came up with. Cause I adjusted these while we're in the meeting. And so, yeah, my, one might be a little higher, one might be a little lower. But those were kind of the options that we came up with in that meeting where Steve and, um, Shalley and I sat down and, and looked at it. I don't know if you have a questions. I'll double check that number while we talk about other things. But we're trying to come up with the coverage.
Do you know the year to? Oh, sorry. Go ahead, Stacy.
Go ahead, Counselor Ross.
What the, um, on the ambulance fees and the motor pool? I thought that we, that we had talked and it would have been suggested that we don't get rid of the ambulance. If we go to a contract, even if we contracted out.
So for a year, I believe that was what they had said, but at some point we would probably if we went to contract, we wouldn't stop. We wouldn't buy new ambulances and we're to the point that we need a new backup ambulance for, and correct? And I was just talking to Chief Shalley and a new ambulance is somewhere probably between three and 400,000. And so that, and I think we only have one more year of the motor pool and paying the motor pool back for that ambulance. So regardless, that's going to drop off unless we decided to keep buying an ambulance and we weren't providing that service.
So just to clarify, if we went through this year and you have like 80,000 on there for motor pool, it would go to zero.
No, because there's other vehicles in there. You can see it's one.
That's the whole fire department. Sorry.
Correct. So you can see it's like 122, 208. So that right here going to the 81 removes the ambulance, but I don't have new ambulance added into here. Cause we haven't done anything budgetarily. So the old one's going to drop off and we're going to need a new one. But the current one we had, I think we paid about 200,000 for. And the new one's going to be significantly more expensive now if it's 300 or maybe we get a screaming deal on like a demo. Chief Shalley was saying we might be able to squeak one by, by like 285, but we are going to have to buy a new ambulance.
Were you, Mr. Brooks? We were trying to track down something more than just.
So I just, I ran, I got some grass for you if you'd like them. But we're closer to two transports.
Transport. Yes.
So the ambulance, for example, last year we ran 1,531 calls. The ambulance was called for service 949 times and then we transported 485 of them. So that's, they were still called out, but we don't, I mean, we're not going to transport everybody. That doesn't mean they don't provide care. For example, we go on a diabetic or an overdose, we take care of them like an ER. We wake them up, they stay, they sign a release, they stay home. We don't transport a lot of those patients. So.
Great. So it may be 1.5 ish.
I think it ended up being, Chief Matthews numbers was like 300 and I think 319 to 185 or something. What I, when I calculated was 2.34 in the numbers he gave you. Now, one thing you have to remember about his numbers is we've not had an ambulance 52 times in the last three months staffed. It went to Roy because we shut down the ambulance. So there's a lot of those transports that we missed. So, so it's just going to continue to go up. But if you look at ambulance 51, that is the ambulance coming out of Washington Terrace. On average within our city, it's taking them 6.9 minutes to get into our city. But when you look at like River Glen, they're eight. Sam, seven. Roamer, obviously they're in Washington Terrace. So it takes them four. Golf course nine, in and out, five. That's how that graph is working. And you can see ambulance four is the next one off 21st, 24th street. And then ambulance one's on Lincoln and 21st. And that's where they would be coming from.
Is that lights and sirens or is that just responding?
So I did it through Google because like Mike, Chief Matthew said, they have that minute of turnout time. And then we're, we've studied it and we understand that lights and sirens doesn't pick you up a lot of time. I mean, you're talking seconds, not minutes. So I would say it's plus or minus 30 seconds to a minute on those numbers. When you calculate those in, I did the same thing for Roy. Roy for our leave, our sick leave and filling a shift on a very regular basis. We had 19 part timers. So we've gone to 10. Now we had 19 and so I don't have the availability from part-time staff. We just cut pack. So they've got to look at things a little bit different than a regular employee. How can I function under stress in an air pack? Injuries kill us. I mean, a simple, I mean, we had a bicep. Guy's out six weeks. Uh, we had another guy out four months. And it's just harder to get firemen back. Once they get hurt, they have to be out a lot longer to come back on duty and fit for duty. So we have those extended time periods, which brings me to the next graph, which shows some of that. You can see as we went through the year, in the one year, we averaged 12 shifts a month that we had to fill either between, between annual leave or sick shift. So when I ran it for 33 months and brought it out a little bit further, we're like 13.5. It went up a little bit.
And just a clarification on that. So it says 12 days on average, but is it 12 shifts?
12, 12 days, not 48, 12 days, 12, 24 hour shifts. That's why I put day instead of shifts. Yeah. So 12 days a month, we have somebody off on average. And you can see in November, December, I had a guy off on an injury and I had another one off into sickness. So we spiked our over, our sick leave up because one guy takes off for three weeks. That's six days. So it really starts to impact us quickly. Um, and then you look down below because we only.
These are the numbers he gave me. Um, I went back and looked. So this overtime here, the 148, that only covers 56 shifts throughout the year or five per month, including that here. The 114, that only covers 30 overtime shifts or three per month approximately. Um, the 170 would be 72 shifts or six. Um, the 164 would be 68 or six per month. And the 138 would be 48 or four per month. Down here, like the 250, that includes, um, having a part timer on 24 hours a day, 365 days a year. Plus 60, um, days that we have somebody come on to help cover or like five days a month to help backfill for those vacancies. So I feel like these numbers are pretty good. However, like there is some, you know, like it would, it's hard to exactly calculate. Because if he had people who were always sick the day that he had vacations, then he's going to need more overtime. Right? If people are sick days that they don't have vacations and they have the other three people available, then they're not going to have to use as much overtime.
Any questions or comments? I have a comment, a couple of comments, um, for the council. Um, so I would prefer that we, and I'll have Cody maybe show the numbers just one more time. I kind of explain exactly what they mean at the bottom, but, uh, my preference would be that we either fund the ambulance and the fire truck, both of them. We've fun for five people to be there 24 hours a day and, uh, or we decide we're not going to do the ambulance and we fund three people a day and we recoup that savings. But I, my preference would be one or the other. One of the things this Chief Shalley was talking, I was thinking we have, the more people we have in there, the more sick calls we have, the more vacations we have to cover. So if we have three people versus five people, I think it reduces the amount of fluctuation and, uh, the amount of uncertainty. But we do lose the revenue. So if we're going to fund the ambulance, I, I want to have two people on. I want it to be open for business, you know, every day. And I don't want to make it hard to hire people. I want to have the 24 hour shifts. I want to have a fully staffed fire department, one way or the other. But that's just, that's my comment. Could you just explain the numbers at the bottom, exactly what the impact of, of what each of those proposals is?
Sure. And like I said, these aren't going to be perfect and it's going to be kind of a trial and error kind of thing. So once again, we've got those five options. So the first option is for full timers. We backfill just with overtime. So it would impact us, would need about $285,000 to fund that would be short that amount. So we'd need that amount. This amount is with three full timers and one part timer 24/7. Would backfill with a hybrid where 251. This is with three full timers and then backfilling with both overtime and part timers. That's 101. Um, this is having five full timers on, um, and no part timers keeping the ambulance. So the current tentative budget, you can see it's right here in this column. So we have four full timers. And then we have 91,000 for, um, the part timers. In the final budget, we added some additional funding here to make that the 24 hour position. But that was, I think a 12 position or a 12 hour position, like almost every day.
So, so is that basically four full timers, one part time and minimum staffing of three?
Yes. Yes. It's a little different because we don't have as much overtime. And you can see like we're doing a budget amendment for, um, being short there. So we're basically just adding funding to those line items.
Counselor Richter.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor. And if I understand your comment correctly, you're, you're kind of looking at option three or four. Is that where you were?
I think so.
That was kind of the, okay.
And that's just my, my opinion.
No, I, I just want to make sure I understood.
I have to be honest, having four people in the fire station so that we can have three, I don't understand that. It's, it's something that's foreign to me. Um, you know, but I, I don't come from the public safety world. I do come from a world where we have minimum staffing and have to have a certain number of people there. And, um, we have ways to work around it and we have the staffing and we, we don't have three people so we can have two, you know?
Absolutely. So it feels like we're really addressing the symptom and not the cause, right? It feels like we're, we're looking at, we have staffing issues that's causing this, but we're trying to affect it by, by the services. Just, yeah, I'm, I'm struggling with it a little bit, uh, and not that, I mean, I, I understand the option three or the four, meaning all the way in or all the way out is, is what I, is what I hear. Is, is any of this going to affect or help our staffing situation moving forward? I, I mean, we're, we're down, we're short right now. Does that mean we're going to continue to deal with those issues moving forward? In other words, is this a temporary fix or?
No, we have a lot of people right now inquiring about our full-time positions. They don't want to come on full-time with the instability. Until decisions that when a decision's made, are we going to run an ambulance service and a fire service? The fire world's an interesting dynamic. Um, it's worse than Facebook in some ways. The, the rumor mill spreads rapidly and sometimes it's accurate, sometimes it's not. And there's a lot of apprehension right now that, you know, hey, I'm, I'm holding on to the edge here, waiting for Riverdale to decide. Are they going to run an ambulance? Are they not going to run, are they going to keep four full-time people? Are they going to get rid of? So the problem with me is if we're going to get rid of basically the three full-time people I already have budgeted for, I've been scared to hire those three positions because I wouldn't want to watch somebody walk out the doors. Me and the mayor and Steve's talked about, that's a scary thing that I hire somebody and I actually pull them potentially from another fire job. And I ask them to walk out. Well, those people out there also sense that too. So do I think for a minute that we're not going to be able to hire once we make a decision? Nope.
It's just about the ambulance.
And if, if we did, I'll just hypothetically, let's say we keep the ambulance and we go to the mayor's option four. What that also does allows me to hire academy students or people with less experience than when I'm sitting at three people or four people. Where do you want me to put that new person? Driving the fire truck? They can't. Commanding an incident? They can't. Driving an ambulance? They haven't been trained. Or putting them in the back of the ambulance, treating your loved ones and they have no experience doing it. So if we fixed it to the option four, that opens up my hiring opportunities too. And my pool of people that I can bring on that I currently can't bring. So there's a lot of positive to that that would fix this problem. So no, it's not temporary. There's a fix.
And that's, thanks, Chief. That's part of the reason I wanted this on tonight. It wasn't ideal to have it here tonight because we have our big budget meeting. Although it does impact the budget. I mean, it's a long discussion and we have a long, long meeting tonight. But I, we need to get this decided so the chief can either hire people or let them know what, what we're doing going forward. So. Counselor Stevens, did you have a comment?
I, I'm also, I'm confused because I don't know what the question is. Be able to define what the answer is. 20 plus years ago, as I was becoming involved in city politics and, and not so much politics, but city affairs and started overseeing some of the budget. So I guess there are stations or fire departments that are robust in their employees. And now I, again, am I going to commit terrorsie by saying, maybe we should listen to whatever it was he was saying? But the point I'm, I'm trying to make is, is last October, we had a discussion from the fire chief. We were down. Was it two full-time at that point? And we're still down three. And so I, I'm, I'm having a hard time understanding where this is the point that will change come Jen, July 1st about the ambulance, whether we have it or not. Cause we've been down a couple of three for full-time positions for a while. I don't, why is this going to make any difference? I, I guess I don't understand the logic.
I think a lot of it, it's been on the plate since January. People have known about that we're kind of moving potentially this direction. I know we talked about the ambulance service maybe going away in Riverdale. The district has came up. And so I think when people start looking at, well, if you're just going to go to a fire district, let me see what they have to say first before I jump in. If you're just going to get rid of your ambulance, well, maybe I want to run ambulance, that they're not going to come work here and then be asked to leave. Because one of the options of three full-time people, that means we don't hire those other three full-time. And that's where, that's where it's really coming into play with hiring. Cause nobody wants to pick up a full-time job when they know option, one of the options is not having four full-time people here. So.
It feels like a self fulfilling. The only reason we're having this discussion is because we have three open positions, right?
No, we're having, we've had staffing issues for a while. The part-time thing's been broke for a while. Like the mayor said, we tried this 12-hour shift, um, thinking it might work and it actually didn't. And we went, we lost five part-time people really quick. And we got down as low as six part timers. We've luckily been able to hire some back. So we finally got ourselves back up to 10. But we just, and we're running very similar things with the other departments. Sorry. We're getting a ton of applicants, but nobody's qualified. Or they don't have the qualifications to meet what we're asking for. So.
Okay. Let me, let me just.
Counselor Stevens.
Oh, thank you. Um, I, I, I listened to Roy City discussion because they've had ambulance, a contract to run ambulance service in West Haven, Hooper for quite some time. And they have three ambulances in two, um, stations. Ogden City runs ambulance service for Far West, I think Plain City.
Plain City is going away now.
Yeah. Those are going away because they're going under the fire district. Okay. So Roy potentially is going to be losing, I'm just going to say Roy and I, and I don't know hard numbers. They're potentially not going to have to man the, their stations to keep the ambulance service. Want to come July 1st, when those contracts go away for West Haven and, and Hooper. And that's why they were interested in picking up, you know, so even if, okay, so hypothetically, if they, if they don't, we keep ambulance. They're going to be over. And then are they going to lose people or are they going, I?
I don't know.
Same, same thing with Ogden City. I mean, because you, you're hypothetically concerned about having to say goodbye to people. If this, that, or the other happens. And I'm just, I'm thinking, there's an ebb and flow going on everywhere. And there is, you know, and again, the way that that guy, and I don't know if he was talking smack or anything, you know, about contracting, what?
So just to clarify what my chief Matthew was saying, they're not planning on putting an ambulance in Riverdale station. They're not contracting advanced DMTs or paramedics.
He was just talking personnel.
Right. But he's not putting additional personnel in Riverdale. He's not adding personnel to cover us. He's covering us with their existing five ambulances.
No, this was a different side conversation where he was, did you hear that? I think you were there. We talked about actually staffing the station with personnel under a separate contract. And again, he just threw that.
I would never recommend that after our South Ogden Air Local. I'd never recommend.
And again, yeah. And again, my background, where I, where I committed blasphemy in front of the police department with the comment that I made. I'm, I'm very keen to having the professionalism, because that, that questions the professionalism of a department.
Right.
And, but, you know, from a accounting perspective, being counter, that's like, okay, can I get it cheaper with this or cheaper with that and still have?
Leave now. And you have survivability because of that. So, the fourteen minutes, I think, is extreme. There's nowhere, we get everywhere in Riverdale and City in fourteen minutes. And a lot faster, as you can see the chart. Service level, Riverdale City Fire is not going, is going to provide a higher level of service than anything you're going to get outside. I guarantee that. I think our PD can vouch for that. They're on the calls with us. You're going to get a, a level of service that you're currently getting. I think there's some citizens that would agree with that. However, if I can't staff a fire engine and I can't staff two units to provide both services, this is where we've got to this point, where now we have to say, okay, what do we need to either staff it or do we need to get rid of a service? And that's where these discussions have come from. I've never been an advocate of just getting rid of our ambulance to get rid of our ambulance. My side has been all about, can we staff a fire engine? Can we keep our people safe and provide that service to the level we need to? If we're going to provide an ambulance service, I need two people on an ambulance. If we're going to provide a fire service, I have to have a firefighter in the back of the fire engine. It's just, that's what it breaks down to. The equipment requires so many personnel. And that's what I'm trying to get to. And if we can't, then let's look at another option in contract.
So, how many do you need on a fire truck?
Three.
And how many do you need on an ambulance?
Two.
Okay.
And they roll simultaneously?
They do.
So, if you have five bodies and, and there's an incident, you have five bodies in the station, in the fire station, they're, they're all going to walk out. They're all going to be gone. Okay. And then anything over that is, comes from mutual aid?
Yep.
And if I could just clarify something for Counselor Richter. This discussion isn't all based on trouble staffing the department. Everything we're doing now is kind of in preparation for 2030. We're watching the expense lines, trying to flatten them a little bit. Several already departments are, are climbing. And this ambulance discussion just kind of came out of, doesn't make sense. Doesn't make sense? Or can we find a better way to do it and get the same equivalent service at a better price or, you know, a cheaper price? Now, you guys are going to make the decision and, but that's, it, it wasn't simply because we couldn't staff the fire department. It may make it a little easier if we didn't have to staff the ambulance, but that's, that wasn't the main reason we, that, that wasn't the reason that we.
Other times, we shift that to Roy or Ogden. Again, that's just.
I can look into it, but we basically did that. We've done it since we started January twenty-fifth to May twenty-seventh. And that's basically what we did is we contracted out to Roy. And Roy didn't want to do it no more. They were being overtaxed. And so, we.
That's, that's now going to change with.
And what I feel we need to provide, ultimately, you have to tell me what level of service you want. And then we do the best we can with that level.
I do have a question for you. Just Counselor Stevens made me think just a little bit. Are there EMTs that are not firefighters?
Yeah.
They're out there.
There are.
My daughter was one.
Yep.
So, so potentially you could hire a couple of EMTs and just have them in your fire station as EMTs?
The one problem with that is the reason why the fire service got into the ambulance business is they're able to use their, their ambulance personnel as firefighters.
Right.
So, when they are short-staffed, they can transition those people over and they can use them cross-staffing. That's, that's the whole reason the fire service went into EMS business.
They've got legislature, state legislature mandate fire to do that?
But based off of these numbers, there is no cost savings here. Is that basically the case? Or is it, there's some kind of long-term benefit that we're not seeing on the page?
I think part, I don't know. I would assume that that's a headache for the chief. And the other thing is, is we got to buy a new ambulance. And so, I just ran the numbers. If it's three hundred thousand, that's like forty thousand a year-ish, forty-five thousand a year that the motor pool would charge the, you know, that it would cost to have an ambulance. And it's like fifty.
Economy of scale, you have.
Exactly. So, at some point, we probably need to be like all in or all out, or those costs are just going to, it's going to cost us enough that we might as well be in or out.
When I came up with these staffing options, just so we know that this is a fix, it's not a temporary thing, it's a fix. I'm modeling this off of all the other departments that are doing this and they're successful. So, all the departments who implement a minimum three-handed fire trucks, two-handed ambulance, they're successful. When they get down to, they're putting two people on a fire engine, they get into the same boat we're in. We're starting to use up overtime. You look at the overtime usage in departments who haven't fixed it yet, and it's similar to ours. And everybody's starting to move towards that. There's very few departments have part-time anymore for that reason right there. So, this is a fix. It's not temporary. This is a fix. I can told, I can hundred percent reassure you that we're not going to come back next year and say, oh, I need another full-time person. I need another twelve-hour shift. Not doing that.
Okay. So, so what's, what's your recommendation to the council? As far as what's been presented to us to make a decision on?
The, the problem with the three full-time and just have part-time waiting for shifts, you're going to have a hard time hiring part-time because we already shown the twelve-hour, having part-times work twelve-hour shift is already, it's already broke.
Four, five?
To fix your problem, it's four.
It's four. Go to the top, please.
If I'm, I'm not against, because when we did the, when we did tooth and taxation last time, we did one full-time person a year budget before. We went two full-time people. I had a twenty-four hour part-time shift. So, talking with the mayor, we went back and forth. My intent at that time was to keep my twenty-four hour part-time shift and be at option five. That was the option we were going to. Then we did the twelve-hour cut. And I believe, and I'm just being honest, that's when we started running into our problems because we started losing people. The retention was gone. And we lost, we lost some good people. Some of them have been here a long time.
So, just to be clear, those numbers at the bottom are the additional cost for each of those options. Counselor Hawes, you still with us?
I am.
Okay.
Just one.
Yeah, Counselor Richter.
Who does our collections on our ambulance service?
Gold Cross.
Because it looks like they've decreased, right? They've gone from like forty-one percent down to thirty-eight, down to thirty-six percentage.
Yeah, I haven't looked at that super close.
We have to report.
Yeah, just sit closer, at the very least.
Our ambulance revenues every year because that is based off our paramedic board fee. So, every year I have to work with Gold Cross. And last year, we reported forty-one percent. So, just like Counselor Hanson was saying, it varies because we'll do a transport today. We may not get paid for it till twelve months later. And so, when you start looking at collection rates, I could pull it from January to Jan.
I looked at it quite in-depth a couple of years ago. It really looked like the variability. I got a bunch of reports from Gold Cross and stuff. And it, it varied, but then when we looked at the patient mix, the patient mix had changed.
So, if you look at the patient mix on this, this is from Gold Cross. And you can see our Medicaid, Medicare, veterans, uninsured, insured, other. And then down below, we want to transport Blue Cross transports. We need Blue Cross Blue Shield because.
Is Veterans a insurance company?
The VA.
Or Tricare?
Tricare, VA, yeah. That's where, so we've had five patients we've transported. So, if you look at that, basically, our average bill is twenty-two hundred dollars, twenty-three hundred dollars. We collect about seven hundred and ninety on average with that patient class. If you go to Blue Cross Blue Shield, we're collecting seventy percent of what we bill. So, there's a big difference between those two, but we don't have as many transports of those. And that's what Coe used to admit. Depends on who we transport, depends on what level of reimbursement. So, there's a lot of variables. And when do those reimbursements come in? Do they come in through thirty days? Do they come in in eight months? So, there's those variables.
And that's like what Chief Shalley was saying about earlier, even though.
Being a volunteer all the way to what we have now. And well, it looks like it probably will expand. And, and some of you guys have been here almost my entire life. And that's important to me. I feel like you have a council that supports the staff, that we put ourselves on the line with everybody else to raise taxes. We back you up when we get these charges from URS so that it doesn't impact your paychecks. But to have you not back the council and have anonymous comments posted on Facebook intentionally to stir up trouble for us and to share misinformation, it just feels like such a backstab. And to know that you're sharing that, like you said, it's such a tight community in Utah. You all know each other in the fire departments. All the way up to where I work in Box Elder, I hear about Riverdale from the fire people. And so, to know that you're sharing bad information, hard for me to believe based off of the, what's been happening on social media and in the community. It's really hard for me to believe that. But we need to provide the services for our residents. We want a fire department who's not just employees who get angry at management. We want guys that are here for forty-plus years that love our city and want to be a part of our community. That's what we want. And we want you to be here. We just want you to be here also, to you want it. And so, I just hate how all of this has come about and that we didn't take the time to approach it where it didn't cause damage to you guys. It didn't cause damage to us or to the residents or to the other cities that now have spent time and are hoping for something they're probably not going to get. I just, I really wish we could work closer together. And when we see those charts of revenues going up and up and up, that when we have those conversations with the departments of let's work together, that we mean it. That we're not going back behind and sabotaging ourselves rather than really looking for opportunities to save the city. I mean, it's coming. It may not be as painful as what we thought, but it could be. We don't even know. It could be worse.
That's kind of up in the air and up to you guys.
Mayor?
Yeah. Sorry. Does that answer your question, Counselor Hawes?
Yep.
Counselor Hanson.
I'd like to go ahead and make the motion that we adopt option four to restructure the fire department and provide them with a budget that they need to maintain the ambulance service and have the staffing to provide the services that Riverdale needs.
Okay. We have a motion. Do we have a second? Is that clear enough, Mr. Brooks, Mr. Carden? We can get that into the budget for tonight and make those changes. Option four.
We can try. I think we can. I, I think, I think personally, I don't know what Mr. Brooks thinks. I think we could just approve this for the fire budget.
You were going to just increase the sales tax number to, to fund the section three hundred thousand dollars?
We can do that. You know, like we've tried to be conservative on that number because our sales tax is dropping.
Actually, having a, a heart attack. And he was on his way to the, to the, to the hospital. And when he saw the ambulance and he stopped, and of course, they, her, since her situation was life-threatening, they immediately gave her some, the assistance she needed, where my wife was not life-threatening. And so, the attendant stayed with my wife and they took her, this person in the car in the South Ogden, oh, and they called a Roy City ambulance. And so, the attendant who was helping my wife rode in, have it contracted. I was prepared to come tonight to go that option for a year, see how it worked. See if we made any, any difference in the budget. See if this level of service was impacted negatively, neutral, or if it improved. I don't know. I was willing to go that route, but I mean, some points have been brought up that are really valid and very good.
Yeah. So, we haven't had three openings for that long.
But if, but if we, if we go with the no ambulance, how many of those three unfilled go away?
Depends on which option you take.
Yeah, it depends on the option. If you take the option that we keep four, then we'd still need to hire three. If you go with one of the options where we use part-timers, then we'd just leave them vacant.
Just leave them vacant.
And we'd basically do away with those positions and use part-time funding.
Okay, so, so we would actually cut back on the full-time positions if we get rid of the five, the N.
It depends on the option. The one option, we keep four. So, we would stay the same as we are today. We'd just get rid of the part.
Trying to be understanding with him. I have, I have not held him to the numbers. I hope he realizes that once his decision's made, those numbers will be very important in the coming year. And to Counselor Hanson's comments, things probably could have been handled better as we went through this and looked at options. I, I definitely admit that. And I feel like we probably could have done some things differently. But I don't necessarily regret looking at ways to save money and looking at options, trying to think outside the box. I'm the one that pushed for the twelve-hour shift. Didn't work out. We're the ones that pushed to look at the, the possible contracting of the ambulance. And we will continue to look at options all over the city. Sometimes they work out great, like when we hired Mr. Cooper. And sometimes they don't work out. And we have to go back on some things and reevaluate, but it's going to be a continuous process. Now, I appreciate Counselor Hanson's comments because I don't know if they were directed at me, but I still heard them and considered ways I could have done things differently and probably should have done things differently. And so, I do appreciate them. But, and I appreciate the fire department as well. Like, I hope they know that I do support them. But I also feel it's my responsibility to find the best way for the city to, to go forward and get the best services for the best price. So, that's all I have. We, so we have a motion and we had a second. Is there any other comments?
Very little excess over the other options. And I don't think anybody really wants to go to option three. And it just, I don't know, it just really amazes me that when it comes down to it, there's so little difference between the option one and option four, where one is not having a, a ambulance and four is having an ambulance. So, that kind of shows you where I'm going.
Okay, any other comments? Ms. Marigoni, will you please poll the council?
Counselor Hanson?
Yes.
Counselor Richter?
Yes.
Counselor Stevens?
I'm still deciding. Yes.
Counselor Hawes?
Yes.
Okay. The decision is unanimous. We will be going with option four. And that will be reflected in the budget later tonight. Okay. Thank you. That was a good discussion. All right. Agenda item number four, consideration of ordinance nine eighty-three approving proposed amendments to the Riverdale City Code, Human Resources Manual, Employees Classification Compensation Plan one dash seven dash two, salaries of the city council and mayor. Mr. Carden?
Okay, thank you, Mayor. I looked at this. I apologize. I must have grabbed the wrong number on this one. So, we didn't include the fifteen dollars a month for the electronic devices in that amount in the ordinance. So, if you want to add that, like I said, that's a new, different thing. So, we'd need to add that if you want to take the full increase. Like I said earlier, a no vote would keep the existing ordinance and basically nothing else would need to be done. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Carden? Counselor Richter?
What would be required to just implement the, the electronic fee without, without the increase?
Would just amend the ordinance to that amount. So, we'd just add, it's a thousand eighty dollars if you guys are okay with the fifteen, because it's just fifteen times six times twelve.
Fifteen dollars a month?
Correct.
So, a hundred and eighty?
Yeah, yeah. Because we, we figured it out on, I believe, is if you do the fifteen times the twelve, it's one eighty. If you times that by four, that's seven twenty. So, we're thinking the seven twenty every four years kind of gives you enough to cover a decent device.
Okay.
Is what we were thinking.
I, I've been all in for favor of, of waiving.
I, I've been all in for favor of waiving the increase of pay for the council and mayor?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, waiving any pay for council and mayor, but have the device stipend. Is that, is that considered a stipend?
So how Stacy would like to handle is it would just be increased to the pay. So you're, you're not going to see on your pay stub like a separate stipend that says that. It would just increase your compensation by the $15. It's easier for her from a payroll standpoint if we handle it that way.
Okay, that was, oh, Councilor Richter?
And then you would eliminate the budget item for, for devices, right, electronic devices for council.
Right, right. And what we've done with that historically, if you remember, is just every four to six years when, excuse me, we've just budgeted accordingly to buy whatever devices you guys wanted at the time last time it was Chromebooks, so.
And the thought would be that would wash.
Right.
Okay.
Right, and then it just makes it a little less complicated as we talked about when we've had things come up with like Counselor Hilton and even that, then it's, it's easier and it's easier for you guys because it's your device, most of you guys like using your own device anyways, and so then.
It doesn't look like anybody here is using anything but their own device.
You're correct. So we're just trying to make it a little easier.
Do you want to put that, do you want to put that?
I can make that motion. I would move to, to, not to approve the, the income or the increase in, in pay, but, but implement the $15 per month stipend for the electronic devices.
So I, I think, I think you'd want to approve it, right, Steve? Because we need to do a new ordinance, but just reduce the amount to just reflect a $15 per month increase. Is that better?
We could do it either way. I mean, you could, you could approve the ordinance as amended, as stated, with reflecting that language, or we could amend it on the amount, either way would work, just as long as we got record of it.
Yeah.
Then I will.
Can I make a suggestion?
Yes.
Can, can we go to like round numbers? So could we just make the council pay $925 a month? And the mayor's, uh, $2,275?
You can do whatever you want.
We, we kind of had a motion al- already.
That's, that's just what I was going to say. If somebody wants to make a motion like that, or if you want, I would make a motion. It's up to you guys. It's just making it round numbers is, is better, I think.
If we got a motion on the floor, we need to deal with that first.
Right, and, and the motion could amend his motion.
I, I will second the motion.
Which motion?
Of.
To, to deny, to, because his motion was to not approve 983.
Right.
And so, so that means no $15 or anything.
Well, I wanted to amend that. So maybe I should withdraw, can I withdraw that motion?
Sure.
Let me withdraw that motion if I can.
Counselor Stevens did try to second it, but the motion's now been withdrawn.
Can I, can I just say something to, to Mr. Hawes's?
Yeah.
And, you know, in, in the future, we're not going to be doing this every year, meaning vacating a raise. So if there's a 3.2% raise next year, it's not going to be a round number. It's, it's going to be, you know, so trying to make it round even is not prudent, but maybe this year, but it's not, not going to be that way for the future.
But if it's, if it's 3.2%, I would just look at what it comes to and round it to the nearest $5.
Okay, does somebody want to make a motion?
Okay, I will make a motion. I will move to approve ordinance 983, but amend the dollar amounts therein to, to only $15 per month as a stipend for the electronic devices and not the additional 9.4 that was in there.
I think that motion works, right, Mr. Brooks?
Um, I, I.
I'll second.
If you, if you said, what, what I would say is to strike the, the, the increase language and just add in that other, because the, the one is on the books already. The way you stated that, Counselor, is you said you wanted to eliminate the dollar and that, that made me a little bit nervous because I don't want to eliminate the, the one that's already on the books. You know what I'm saying? So just rephrase that so that it reads better, that just maintain the current salary with the additional increase in the electronic fee.
Very good. Then I will move to approve ordinance 983, maintaining the current salary and including the $15 electronic stipend.
A court judge wages, and so that amount is $86,843.40. And that's the minimum we're required to pay a judge for the case load that we have.
Okay, any questions for Mr. Carden? Seeing none, a motion would be in order?
Put in a motion to approve ordinance 984 approving the proposed amendment to the Riverdale City Code, Human Resource Manual, Employee Classification Compensation Plan 1-7-F-6, salary of the justice court judge.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Right, a motion and a second, any discussion on that motion? Ms.
Can you repeat that amount?
60, uh, $6,370 a month.
I'm not sure if that's right.
Um, that's, that's what's in.
I think Cody said 86,843.40 annually.
That's correct.
It was wrong in the packet.
Yeah, we had it wrong in the packet.
I'm reading the packet and it was updated from what I'm reading.
Yeah, sorry.
Yeah.
Sorry, one more time, 86? Okay, one other.
So that's annual?
Yeah. 86,843 and then 40 cents.
Okay, now you're messing with me.
There it is.
Okay, um, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to.
What, are you going to amend your motion?
Yes.
Okay, perfect.
I'm going to amend the motion of ordinance 984 to be an annual salary of 86,000 for the, this year would be retro to 1124, is that correct? I don't know. I'm, I'm, I'm somewhat conflicted here because there is a need, but I'm, anyway.
There is a need, but we've also been cashing franchise tax. And so it will give us a better idea of, of what's happening really with what we've been already increasing. But I, like I said, I do support that we need to be more routine, right?
I, I have, my question is from Mr. Carden. Now, if we do put in for a truth in taxation, if there's a whole lot of other entities out there doing it, it kind of, if I remember correctly from our discussions last time, it kind of diminishes, the more the people involved, the more it diminishes our cost because of the mailings and different things. Is that correct? So, so do you know what the, the mood is in the county?
I haven't looked. Some of you actually might know more from the other boards and things that you're on.
We're not doing anything.
Central Weaver's doing a truth in taxation.
Yeah, I knew they were.
And I think Weaver School was.
Weaver School District almost always does, so I would assume they are. I'm not sure on the mosquito abatement district and a couple of those. And, and it's a double-edged sword because it reduces the cost for the city, but I'd say the impact to the residents is a lot more because then if we just were the only ones doing it and their bill only goes up by whatever our increase is, if everybody's doing it, then it's going to go up by a lot more, their taxes. But you're right, like it does definitely increase. And just since we're talking about it, if you remember, we say an amount that we want to go to and that's the max we can go to. And then between now and August, we could reduce that. So ultimately you could decide not to do any increase, but we would have those costs.
One other thing to consider is we have some big buildings coming in to previously agricultural type areas. And we'll see that, we see that new.
The revenues for the, the new taxes on that, or is it because it's in an RDA, will we see that or not?
Well, we will until the RDA is triggered. And so where the RDA is triggered next year, like.
Yeah. I, it was just a thought that maybe seeing what, how those were going to, the new America First building or buildings and the Tesla, to see what those, how those would impact our taxes.
So the American.
Positive or negative?
Right, the America First building as it sits today is outside of the RDA. But if you guys adjusted the RDA boundaries, then that may or may not be the case.
But that's also going to, if they are occupied, it's going to also increase the franchise.
Hopefully.
Yeah, hopefully.
It might be interesting to see where things come down.
I, I, I could go for truth in lending, but in a minimal capacity. Um, and I, and I think, you know, when you go, what, 10, 12, 14 years without doing it and you do a doozy, it, it creates a lock and curse.
Okay, well then we can withdraw that motion. Further discussion on the item?
Is there anything you want to see? I mean, we can pull up the property tax website.
We have to make decisions tonight.
Yes, if you're doing truth in taxation or not. We either have to pre $1,945,367. I guess if you wanted to take Counselor Hawes' approach, you could round up or down to like $1,945 and then the county would adjust the rate accordingly.
How much of an impact is that on? So that's just on the Riverdale portion of the taxes?
Correct.
Any idea how much of a dollar amount that is?
So we still have preliminary data and I didn't get, the county doesn't send us the median household price unless I include it. But we could look up somebody's house really quick if you want and see what they paid last year and then add 12% to it, would have a pretty good idea.
Is there anybody that's not here?
Alan.
Oh, Alan. Yeah, I bet, I bet Counselor Hawes could have the number for us in a matter of seconds.
Yeah, he's probably got it all calculated.
Was it 1463 last year? Was that 20?
Yeah, that was the rate last year, you're correct.
Okay, I paid 372.55 on, um, uh, 476, uh, 463 market value with a 254, um, taxable value.
Oh, I did that wrong. So you paid 372.55?
Yeah, 372.55.
So if we times that just by the 1.1225, it'd be about 418.19. That was about 375, so it'd be about $40 to $3 increase.
I don't know.
So it'd be about 350 a month, $3.60 a month increase.
Any other questions from the council?
Yes.
Okay.
If we say yes tonight, we can still back out, right?
We can go down, we just can't go up. The only disadvantage is we're going to incur costs to do like.
If we're not going to actually do it.
If we're not going to actually do it. So if you were like, I don't think I really want to do it, then it's probably better that we don't do it or we're just going to spend money. But if you're thinking we'll do something.
Wasn't it like close to 10,000 depending on how much you share?
I believe so, is what we paid last time. But it really depends on how many entities participate because they like share the costs. There's quite a few.
10,000 with a whole bunch of entities helping with the cost.
Right.
So while I, again, I agree, the concept, we need to have those discussions, have them open. Probably a little premature here to do it.
Well, and we've just gone through a long discussion and kind of a long, it's been a long six months for me with the fire department, so hopefully next year that problem will be solved. And so we can spend that six months looking for, do we need to do a truth in taxation? Or what, what, what would be the appropriate expense for that, so.
And I agree that we, this feels rushed.
Yeah.
And this should be something that we start discussing April, May, or March, April.
February strategic planning.
Yes, as, as to whether or not, because as we kind of just brainstorm, well, if we're going to do it, then how much? Well, I, that doesn't feel right.
Yeah.
So with that, I'd like to remake the motion that we approve resolution 2024-17, as listed in the packet.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion on the motion? Ms. Marigoni, will you please poll the council?
Counselor Stevens?
Yes.
Counselor Hawes?
Yes.
Counselor Hanson?
Yes.
Counselor Richter?
Yes.
Okay, very good, that passes unanimously. We'll move on to item number seven, consideration of resolution 2024-18 approving the nonreciprocal inter-fund activity transfer of resources utilized by the city's general fund as provided by the city's water fund. The estimated value of these culinary water services is $80,000. Mr. Carden?
Thank you, Mayor. So historically, this had never been done. We have never paid those utility services. So a few years ago, this came up that we either had to start paying them or we needed to do this nonreciprocal inter-fund transfer. So at the time, the council wanted to do this rather than add additional costs to the general fund, so we've just continued to do that. You can see in the, provided in the packet is a list of all the water meters and, and kind of close locations, addresses of where they are and the water we use. And that the value totaled approximately 80,000, it's like 79,000 and change. So that's what we're doing, is we're basically disclosing that we didn't transfer that money, but this is what it would have been.
Okay, Mr. Mayor?
Counselor Stevens?
I'd like to put a motion that we approve, resolution 2024-18, approving the nonreciprocal inter-fund activity transfer resources in the amount of culinary water in the amount of $80,000.
Do we have a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
All right, a motion and a second, any discussion on the motion?
Hey, yeah, I, I wonder, uh, how much is the increase in water fees expected to increase revenue in the water fund?
It would be like by the same increase as the percentage. So I think the percentage is like 13.84%. So it'd be, or do you mean the dollar amount?
I mean the dollar amount.
So based on the budget amounts, it's 188,000. Because we have, the current year budget, I have $1,540. And for the current year, I have $1,352. And that's found on page 36 of the PDF.
So, so if we, if we, if the city did actually pay their water bill to the water fund, then we probably would only have to increase our, uh, water rates about a little over half of what we're raising them.
Yes, that's correct. Then we'd need additional funding to pay that 80,000 out of the general fund.
Yeah, so right now the citizens are paying for the water that we use on the, on the parks.
Yeah, they're paying for it either way. I mean, like at some point, the more costs we keep adding to the general fund, we're really going to have to do a property tax increase. increase, and it's going to need to be even bigger. Yeah, depending on how you look at it, yeah.
To pay for the water that we, it appeared based on the revenues in the water fund that that year, the citizens did an exceptional job of, um, saving water because the revenue in the water fund dropped significantly, right?
That's correct. Revenues did drop that year.
Yeah, even though, even though we raised rates and put a surcharge on, revenues went down. I just thought that was pretty interesting. Um, I, I just think that, uh, that passing on.
We can't mark yes there. But then by Steve performing a review, we do have the mitigating control. And he has online access, I believe, as well. They go in and review all of our, we switched recently to bet to US Bank to review our credit cards.
So we don't have a formal audit committee because we kind of said no on that.
We did some of the line items, but then we're under on like the part timers because we haven't had a lot of part timers working. And so when we looked at it, that's, that's seventy.
Should probably come in under budget. While some of the other lines would come in over budget, and we would be okay with that because in total, ten fifty seven.
Ten fifty seven, eleven hundred will be under budget. However, um, the, so you can see what adjustments have been made to the budget since we discussed it line item by line item on May seventh. So you can see those changes with what you did with item number three on the agenda tonight. Those figures that were.
Your vast knowledge, which would you recommend?
So that's a hard one. I've just been looking at it since we, because obviously I had no idea what you were going to do tonight. Um, so in the packet is the sales tax report. So if you look at that, year to date through May, we're at seven hundred or seven point nine million. We average about seven hundred thousand. So a month in collections and, and that need close and things. So like, I like the idea of franchise tax. However, I like the idea of not touching the franchise tax where we have it. So I would probably lean towards sales tax a little bit, just because.
For a total of, what's that for? I don't know.
Forty seven, I believe.
To take that up to.
Or forty eight, forty eight.
Five and three is the eight, yes. Take that to, um, take that up to seven, at least seventy five, if not a hundred thousand total. So essentially.
Reduce forty five, forty seven, nine thousand by fifty two thousand. So the budget would still balance.
Okay, so, uh, what was the last four digits? Nine thousand?
Nine thousand.
Okay.
And fifty two thousand actually works out really good on that because the budget for the one line items, two million, one hundred and fifty two thousand, six hundred. So the balance would be two million, one hundred thousand, six hundred dollars. Any other questions I can answer?
All right. Oh, Counselor Richter.
We just clarified for me, and I think you kind of did the use of the Class C road funds and the use of the local option highway funds in the miscellaneous revenue.
Yeah, so that, so that's just a rollover from the current year to the next year. So if you look at.
To the fund balance.
Yes, yeah. So if you look at, in theory, if my math's good, which hopefully it is, if you take like ten thirty three, fifty, six hundred of the fire department funding proposal, does that work? Something like that? And then you'd need to say what revenue source you're offsetting that with, and it's approximately two hundred and twelve thousand. So I think you could say the offset will be an increase in sales tax or franchise fees. Or a reduction in the transfer of the capital projects fund from the franchise fees.
I'm sorry.
One more time?
No, the, that is offset by the sales tax.
Either sales tax or.
Okay, don't do the either.
You guys hadn't said, so I don't know.
Because if you say, you know, if I make that, nevermind.
Yeah, I got you.
Okay, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I'd like to put forth that we approve the Resolution twenty twenty.
In the expenditures are going up, and that's why it was difficult for me to come up with a, a reasonable, uh, rate that would, that I would rather apply. So that's why I decided to just help people by delaying it past the.
Resolutions, but the discussion will be all together. So consideration of Resolution twenty twenty four dash twenty two, approving a UDOT Betterment Agreement concerning work to be performed on the bridges located on forty four hundred South, and also Resolution twenty twenty four dash twenty.
Having America First committing to pay the city that same amount. So essentially, it's a reciprocal deal. Um, the funds would be, uh, need to be paid at the time the construction starts, and then America First would be reimbursing the city.
Questions for Mr. Cooper?
When do they anticipate starting construction?
I believe immediately. Is that right?
Thank you, Mr. Douglas.
So they're in design right now. They're at sixty percent on design. So I would suspect by about November, unless they really rush it, we'll probably have a full design package and have it out to bid. So I think it would be next construction season.
Could you see that going up with inflation?
There's always that risk.
And so.
Stripe for two at, at present time. The other one will accommodate at least three lanes going, um, eastbound. And I think that's beneficial in a way because traffic's going to find the easiest way out. And so if it's four lanes going west, we get them not coming down into our residential areas easy. And, you know, hopefully they'll go that way, but it does accommodate them coming. Some of their flow patterns show them going on Parker Drive and out to Thirty First Street is a, is a way to get the freeway. There's other things happening on the interstate that's going to be huge, though, that could really change how all that works. If they get their slip lane, some stuff that they proposed up there. So it's way, I mean, they said we was good for the next twenty years the way it is, but then the America First project changed that whole projection, and that's why we pushed them to do it now. But they felt like UDOT's numbers on forty four hundred, they felt like that we was good for twenty years with the current configuration.
They're going to move the pedestrian?
So we don't know for sure, but we would suppose that all of that's going to be moved.
Okay.
But they will continue, we will continue to have pedestrian movement through there.
I mean, that pedestrian.
No, the bridge itself will not, all the movement on the I fifteen overpass over the I fifteen will go north. So the, our, our bridge goes over pedestrians will not be touched. It'll stay in current location.
Okay.
Everything will push north for that bridge.
Counselor Hanson?
I have a lot of questions and comments, but I don't know that I need to ask them all. Um, when I was reading through the AFCU agreement, does it then talk about expanding the RDA area, and then the city would eventually recuperate, repay them for the same amount? Efforts to try, I know there's a lot of development going on with Weber, Ogden, and Roy up in that area. That's why they're supportive. And so it seems like the transportation part of it should be a piece of that. I mean, Airport Road's already there. It's crappy. We all know it's crappy and nobody wants to take it. But if P, if a piece of that is to improve transportation for everybody, that is a much better option to send people back to Thirty First Street for the drivers also, because they can turn right onto I fifteen on the on ramp right there. But I guess that's what my concern is, is right now we're taking a lot on faith by saying, yeah, let's pull the trigger, let's widen this road, which could ultimately have such a negative impact on those roads that go past our school and past the park, where people park all along Parker Drive. It just, it, it's putting a lot at risk, I think. And so I guess I can take it on faith if.
Done it at some point in time. But it's almost a double edged sword, too, and I expressed this to Brandon a couple of weeks ago, is, um, you, you, ideally, you have seven thousand people in here. We want them coming into Riverdale and shopping. But on the other hand, our roads are getting so maxed out, some of these we need to get out without the shopping kind of thing. And so it's almost like we shoot ourselves in the foot by diverting all that traffic outward. But I don't think we really have much choice, because otherwise the forty four hundred is going to turn into Riverdale Road, which we don't want. So, um, it's, it's a big deal, and it's, it's been one we've spent a lot of time on in these negotiations. We started off at, wasn't that over twenty million, Sean, the first bid we got back from UDOT on these bridges?
The Betterment cost was over seven million is what we started with. The other thing to keep in mind is like, we hate that. We hate what's going on sometimes with development. But for one time, maybe we're just a speck ahead instead of always being catch up, because you know what needs to be done. It's going to happen.
Only do what we can do.
It's hard, you know?
Fighting it too, you know? But if you want, it's a double edged sword, because you're asking, you're doing RDA up there, and you're asking for growth, so you're going to incur traffic.
Right.
It's just how do we manage it? And how do we stay ahead of it?
And if we've got those other options, the UDOT's working on an interchange, if there's is any way to try to encourage some regional transportation to improve Airport Road, and, I mean, send the four lanes that direction to them, and I don't know.
So the four lanes will be going that way, and that's a matter of.
I think Roy recognizes that.
Yeah, Mayor Dan Dois on board.
Knows it's coming.
All the way to nineteen hundred. He wants four lanes all the way along forty four hundred going west.
Brandon's been meeting with county people and stuff. I mean, this is all moving forward. We're going to have some numbers here within the next couple of weeks. We're going to be be, I mean, we're, we're, we're going to have a lot of stuff for you here. We're, we're closer than you think we are on some of this stuff. It's going to start flying.
It just helps make decisions when we know what, what's being worked on and what's.
And they're really.
Included in this.
Yeah.
And so it's been less than a year.
And all the big players in the state are aware of what's going on. Um, I've had meetings with UTA. They're talking about a dedicated bus route to the campus from the front runner stop in Roy, maybe, maybe hitting North Grumman and just a loop where they just dedicate a, even a free like trolley or something. We have the Three Gates Trail, which is an active trans, uh, transportation project that, uh, that goes all along Hill Air Force Base, but it comes along the campus, stopping near Converges. Um, when we started talking about America First and the impact that that's going to have, um, it shot to the top of the Wausatch Front Regional Council. It's already getting fun, funding for, um, financial impacts of feasibility studies, and it was, it was just an idea.
Absolutely. I think if you ask America First right now, they know we're pretty much committed to our residents and to what's best for Riverdale, not just America First.
That's great. That's all I had.
Well, we, we love employees to come to Riverdale, but our residents come first, and the shoppers come second, and then the employees have to come here. So, I mean, we, we do what we can to get them in and out.
We want them to shop.
We do want them to shop, but we, we do what we can to help them get in and out easily, but.
It's a delicate balance.
Yeah, it really is.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate it.
Just one final point of clarification, Mayor. Um, I pulled up the, uh, agreement between the city and America First, and the actual language says that the credit union agrees to reimburse the city for all of its payments made under the Betterment Agreement. So to your point, Counselor, if those costs do increase beyond what's stated in the Betterment Agreement, and that cost, uh, will fall to the city, then that's reimbursable by America First.
Any other questions or comments? All right, um, seeing none, we'll start with, uh, first was Resolution twenty twenty four dash twenty two, approving the UDOT Betterment Agreement concerning work to be performed on the bridges located on forty four hundred South. Do we have a motion?
Move to approve Resolution twenty twenty, twenty twenty four, twenty two, approving the UDOT Betterment Agreement concerning the work to be performed on bridges located on forty four hundred South.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, Ms. Mayor Gorni, will you please poll the council?
Counselor Hanson?
Yes.
This is unanimously. Thank you. We'll now move on to the comments section of our meeting. Any comments from the city council for this meeting?
I just had one. I didn't mean to call you out. That's not what I was doing. I really appreciate that we made, that we tried something different on the shifts at the fire department. I really do. And it's, I don't want to discourage trying new things that are going to help us save money on the budget. I've had to do that a lot in my career working for cities and for the county, and sometimes it's a winner, and sometimes it's really not. But I do, I do want to encourage that we have better communication and, and maybe if we need to slow down the process so that we see the numbers before we move forward with it, maybe that's just what I would encourage, and that we all stay off Facebook. That's my other comment. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other comments from the city council?
What's on Facebook?
You're lucky. You're lucky, man, Counselor Stevens. Um, okay, any comments from the city staff for this meeting? Chief?
Just want to take a brief second and thank you guys again for supporting employees. Uh, this is probably one of the more challenging meetings that I've been to for you guys. And, uh, I can, I can clearly see, and I think everyone in this room can clearly see anyone who's watching, how much thought and, and effort you put into this calling you have. So, um, you, you, all your thoughts, each had a lot of different thoughts on different things, and they were well thought and, uh, good questions that need to be asked because you're doing your job. And so I just want to thank you guys again, um, because this means a lot to, to all the staff in the city, but, you know, especially the police department, for you guys always supporting us. I didn't know about your comment twenty years ago, so I forgive you. I'm just messing with you. You brought it up.
Oh, I, oh, oh, I got, I got shamed and put in school.
I didn't even hear about that one until now, but, uh, I, I really do feel blessed, and I do brag to all my friends that are in, in government and, and family members that live in the area of how lucky I am to work for Riverdale City because of the, uh, the mayor and the council members that have served previously, and they continue to serve and their support in not just you guys, but you're a reflection of the community. And they really do love and support the employees. And anyways, I just want to thank you. A lot of times I send you an email, you'll still probably get one, but thanks again for supporting us.
Thanks, Chief. Any other comments from staff?
The only thing I would just add to any of this, I mean, I got all kinds of things, but I'll leave it alone. It's been a long enough meeting, but we do have that ARSEC graduation, uh, January or June twenty seventh, and we won't have another meeting before that.
Try the what, cred?
The ARSEC, the Drug Corps.
Last one, right?
It's the last one, yeah. So if any of you want to attend, that's at one o'clock. So I know it's not a, it's a, not a really good time for you. It's June twenty seventh at one o'clock. It'll be down here downstairs, but that will be the last one, and then that wraps up. So if you would like to attend, I'm sure they would appreciate it.
Is that it?
Yeah, for tonight. I'll leave it alone.
All right, Chief Forman was another experiment that worked out, so it's not always bad. Okay, sometimes we hit a home run. Sometimes we don't. Can't bet a thousand. Um, I don't have any comments for this meeting. So with that, we need a motion adjourned.
So moved.
Second.
Second, all in favor say yes?
Yes.
That meeting is adjourned. Thank you. We'll now move on to our RDA meeting. Okay, well, okay, we'd like to welcome the, uh, everybody to the Riverdale City. Does anybody need a break before we start? No, let's not lengthen this. Okay, let's go fast.
Sorry.
Nope, that's good. Riverdale City RDA Board Meeting for Tuesday, June eighteenth, twenty twenty four. Please let the record show that all board members are present, uh, with Board Member Alan Arnold being excused and Board Member Stacy Hawes joining via WebEx. Seeing no public here today, we will skip public comment, no presentations, reports, or consent items. We'll move on to Section E action items. Public hearing to receive and consider comments regarding the adoption of the final Riverdale RDA budget for fiscal year twenty twenty five and amending the final Riverdale RDA budget for fiscal year twenty twenty four. Uh, any questions or comments about that public hearing?
I'll move to open the hearing.
We have a motion to open.
Second.
And a second. Any discussion on that motion? Ms. Mayor Gorni, will you please poll the board?
Okay.
To open the public hearing.
Sorry, I didn't have it on here, because last time we just did all in favor.
Oh, oh, really?
On the council, yeah.
Are we still on, on YouTube?
Yeah.
Is it working?
It's.
Sort of.
All right, that passes unanimously. Very good. Let's move on to item number two, consideration of Resolution R twenty twenty four dash zero one, amending the Riverdale RDA budget for fiscal year twenty four. Um, Mr. Carden?
Thank you, Mayor, or thank you, whatever. Um, so, um, the only amendment we have is for the West Bench RDA, as we talked about earlier. If you remember, we had a property sale during the year, and we had to pay a bunch of like closing costs and realtor fees associated with that property. And so we just needed, um, a budget to coincide with that. Um, it was, the only change is on that form. When I updated it, it's the West Bench account numbers, but it says statutory housing, but it's really the West Bench. Um, I'm happy to answer any questions you have. We'll pay for the. I'm happy to answer any questions you have. We'll pay for these, we already paid for these out of the proceeds. So we're still left with the net of that sell in that fund. And then if you remember, we'll start collecting property taxes as of January.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Carden? Seeing none, a motion would be in order.
I'll make the, I'll make the motion to approve resolution R 2024-01, amending the Riverdale RDA budget for fiscal year 24.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? Ms. Maragoni, will you please poll the board?
Board member Richter?
Yes.
Board member Stevens?
Yes.
Board member Haas?
Yes.
Board member Hanson?
Yes.
Okay, that passes unanimously. Thank you. We'll move on to item number three, consideration of resolution R 2024-02, adopting the Riverdale RDA budget for fiscal year 25, 2025. Mr. Carden?
Thank you. So we just wanted to talk to you about one thing. Nothing's changed in this budget since the tentative. It's all the same. The one thing that it was in the tentative and we talked about it with Fred, but Rich didn't talk about it. We have a budget note in there. If you look on, I just have, I didn't print it twice. So it's with the RDA budget. And the senior housing fund, we have a proposed increase, just trying to, to keep ground with that. Rich kind of came up with a proposal on how he would like to do that. And I can let you talk about it, but it's in the budget, the amount. And we have the budget note in there. We briefly mentioned it at the meeting, but kind of his calculation and stuff. If you have any questions, he can answer the specifics, but that's the only thing I'd point out in, in the future. Would just like to, to do that, kind of by that methodology and with Fred's. So.
Thank you, board. I'll, I'll be brief. Right now, okay, the HUD rates have been going up about seven and a half percent average. So if we do a 10% increase, we'd be gaining a little bit of ground every year. If we did that increase till 2030, our projections would be that we would be able to, to meet those requirements where we're, we're not drawing upon the reserves in, in the RDA and them is to expect rent increases. Because we need to, to make the numbers balance and they're not balancing. I think it's really important that we're compassionate as we do that. So a 50, a 60% increase all in one year would.
We have a motion. Do we have a, and a second? Any discussion on the motion? Ms. Maragoni, will you please poll the board for the approval of resolution R 2024-02?
Board member Hanson?
Yes.
Board member Richter?
Yes.
Board member Haas?
Yes.
Board member Stevens?
Yes.
All right, that passes unanimously.
You do want to get extra candy though.
I'll get extra candy.
If you've never been on.
It's, it's hard. I'll show you a couple of, because I've got a lot of.